Say.
All right, now it's got 3:00 PM, so why don't we call the meeting to order? Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Do it the other way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Godvow.
Here.
Mr. Noonan. Absent. Mr. Christensen. Mr. Aaron's. Absent. Mr. Farret.
Here.
Ms. Lautner.
Present.
Mr. Popa.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Mr. Vadoon.
Here.
We have a forum.
We have a forum, yes.
We have a forum.
Now, Barron's dropped out. I see you called his name. Right? Did you say? Did I hear you say Barron's?
No.
No. What did you hear?
I don't know. I got bad.
It would've been a good catch. I didn't catch it.
It's not on the.
It's not on the list.
We're just so used to hearing his name.
Any changes or amendments to the agenda? I'd like to add one under discussions and actions. Add number four, Old Settlers' Additional Action Items.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add summer help.
Under discussion item?
Under, he can put it where he wants, but.
Let's make that number five under discussion items.
Move to approve the agenda as amended?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Any conflicts of interest for any of the items on the agenda with anybody on the committee? No conflicts of interest?
Please, sir.
Take public comment at this time? No public comment? Staff comments at this time, Lori? Consideration of the December 6th meeting minutes, which were on pages two through six. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of December 6th, 2023. Ask presented.
Pope will second that.
John Pope will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, consideration of the January 10th, 2024, meeting minutes on pages seven through 10. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Pope will make that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any good discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to unfinished business. We had an item from the previous meeting that was tabled and moved to this meeting to identify 2024 goals for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Entertain anyone else's comments about what goals they'd like to have included in for our 2024.
I would just like to make concerted effort as a Parks and Rec Commission to spend our money this year. I think that needs to be our top priority, or we will lose it if we don't use it. I don't know how to state that as a more formal goal, if you want me to stab at it, but successfully spend 2024 budget in its entirety following our approved plans or yeah, something. Unless this group is actually able to say what those funds will go for. Are we at a point?
No, I don't think we are.
Okay.
Actually, we have more projects than we have funds.
So we do have a list.
We have a list.
A prioritized list.
We have a budget that was prepared, so I don't know that we'd have any problem spending the monies. However, we don't have an approved exact list of what we'll spend it on at this time.
You have a list of what our goals were last year?
I have the budget that was submitted by Casey, and we have what was included in the CIP.
We had a bunch of action items for each committee and stuff for park, but I don't know if goals are such.
Don, you have a comment?
Yeah, well, we have a lot of goals. Each park has a lot of goals, but we should look at those as a unit together. And I think our main thing we should do is, as a group, prioritize what this group, this committee feels is the most important one to do and focus on that. I don't care what park it's at, which, where it's at, we should all agree on which ones to put our efforts into and do it collectively together.
Do you have specific goals for Miles Kimmerly Park?
You bet I do.
Including anything to do with the old, the poor farm on?
That's not high on my list. It is on Steve's, I know, but no.
Okay.
That's a whole separate topic, I think. One thing I should mention, Melinda should bring this up, she told me that we did get a rollover for the money from '23 that we didn't spend, which was $37,000 or more. I don't know what it was.
More, 50.
I think it was 55.
The whole 55? Oh, that's.
That's the proposal, yes.
Oh, I thought you said it passed.
I would, I would, I wanted to check on that because I was sure we had done a budget amendment in January, and I'm glad you reminded me to check on that. I thought it was the budget amendment in January.
I'm gonna lose sleep over it.
Yeah, we won't. We won't lose sleep. We'll get there.
I'm gonna ask this to stop back from the second discussion because I had that under when we discussed the financials.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so do you want to tell us what your Miles Kimmerly Park goals are, maybe the top couple?
Well, I don't know that that's the biggest thing now because we're revamping that, and this Miles Committee, Park Committee is gonna meet, and we'll decide what those are. I know what they are for me, but I can't speak for the whole committee. So it's early for that. But I think as a number two, after you've used the money, remember to prioritize the goals as a group, whichever we come up with is the most important one, and focus on that. And I think we'll get somewhere.
As far as the overall committee, I put down our top goal, our A goal, is the creation and approval of the 2025-2029 Parks and Rec Plan, which is due by the end of the year. Under our Old Settlers Park, we had our meeting on Monday, and coming out of that was completion of the gazebo refurbishment, the installation of portable toilets on the northeast side of the park for the summer and fall, the purchase and installation of the Spring Rider, which was part of the Lanna Memorial donation from last year, but that's an outstanding item that needs to get purchased and installed. And then I added one which wasn't actually in the discussion with the committee for my own personal, which is to address the MMRMA risk assessment issues, especially the playground surface material issue and the chapel rental slash use contract, which is a legal issue that we have to discuss with people. So those are the ones that I put on here for Old Settlers Park.
I'm sorry, after Spring Rider, you had what now?
It's the, to address the MMRMA risk assessment issues.
Yep.
Especially the playground surface material one.
That's right.
And the chapel rental slash use contract.
Right, okay.
Issue.
Okay, thank you.
Do you got anything coming out of Veronica?
Yes, we discussed the, from Savin, having to do the weed control spray. That's gonna have to be money set aside for that soon to get that done. We also discussed the children's fishing event that's gonna be coming up, and the money will be, have to be set aside for that, not at this time. And we, there was discussion too on the fence posts, I believe, that were in need of replacement. That's gonna be, obviously, the issue. But I think the most important thing right now is dealing with this, the bill for Savin for the invasive species spraying, because we need to get that deposit to them so they can be ready, if we're at spring now, I have no idea.
So there was no grant? That wasn't a 2% or anything? That's gonna have to come out of our, of your regular budget?
Yep.
In the past, it's always been grant funded, hasn't it?
I don't know for sure from the county, but it was really the 2% grant, because parts of the, at least in the paper.
Have they submitted an invasive species grant for this ground? I haven't seen.
I don't know where Sees went with that. I know that it comes back out of the shop work. It's what Dave goes. Bring the gold sand.
Since you guys have submitted stuff, I'll preempt my committee, and hopefully I'll
say the right things, but I'll add on there the UA paved pathway. It's a one-mile loop. We divided it up into three sections, at least get the first section done, which would be about a third of a mile. That's number one. Number two, these pickleball courts, our conceptual plan has eight in there. We'd like to start off with four, four pickleball courts. That's enough. I spent all your money.
So the goal agrees to get the four pickleball courts installed in 2024?
Yeah. However, no, we won't. Before we do either of those two things, the first thing we should do, we have to, we have to level the land, and I put that as a number one priority for Miles Kimmerly Park, to level off the area. We're gonna put the pickleball courts, the paved path, and it'll also involve paving, smoothing out ball fields. So that's a big item. Thank you for mentioning that.
Another big item is the bathroom there.
And bathrooms, absolutely. That might come the second before.
I think so.
My feeling is you should think big or go home.
We are thinking huge.
It'll be nice.
Just my clarification, there is a bathroom there now? There is no.
We don't have a UA toilet there.
Okay.
Right?
To support what the activities.
Toilet from 1970.
Enter at your own risk.
Miles Kimmerly is the biggest park, but it's the Poor Sisters.
Lori, are we up to, are we too fast for you? We're doing all right? Okay. These are calendars for 2024, with all the different meetings on it.
So did we capture all those goals, you think, or?
I think Lori's got them all.
I can read them back.
Can you read them back?
Yeah. Kama, to spend our budget this year, successfully expend our approved budget. Faric mentioned prioritize goals as a group, creation and approval of the 25, 2025-2029 Parks Plan. For OSP, Old Settlers Park, we have completion of gazebo, installation of portable toilets, installation of Spring Rider for playgrounds, address MMRMA risk assessment issues, specifically the playground, I call it ground cover, it's something different, and the chapel rental use issue. Veronica Valley, Savin weed control, kids fish day, fence posts in need of replacement, and Miles Kimmerly Park, paint one-third of the one-mile loop trail, four pickleball courts, and a restroom.
Leveling up.
Put it, put it as number one for Miles Kimmerly, up land leveling, or grading the land for the various projects first. That's the first thing we have to do. And then put second, since we're gonna run out of money anyway, at least one toilet pod like they're doing at Veronica Valley.
Okay. A cement pad? Is that what you're saying, a cement pad for this portable?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The cement pad.
Yeah, pull the pad, pull it, we get down, then we can do the rest.
You have a key, kind of? John?
Does everybody have that recreation plan in front of the book that Laurel put out? It's right in the front, a 2022-2024 recreation plan?
Yep, this one?
Yeah. If you look on page 65 and the next several pages, we went through this thing pretty tightly with our contractor, and we identified goals and objectives. And if that was in our plan, then either this meeting or the next meeting, these parks, let me just run by real quick what the action plans were for Kimmerly. Redefine the wooded trail, upgrade the current restroom facilities, what about our minimum parking, provide universally accessible crosswalks, is that done or not? Define central location for the coyosec for onsite, upgrade the playground equipment. These were what we had spent money for and identified real thoroughly, and it took us about a half a year to do this. We should be going to these. Now, there may be little action items that we gotta fix the potholes at, but that's maintenance. And each page of this, for each park, listed these goals, and I think that's where we ought to start with each one of our committees and come back and say, we wanna spend this money, and we wanna make these crosswalks. We identified it, we had a contractor come in, and we all worked on it. We had public input to it. The next page goes on to other stuff. Veronica Valley had a bunch of stuff. Universally accessible access to the pond. Well, we did that. We spent some money, and we did it, and we could take this thing and cross that off. Is that done? What about a small pavilion for picnicking for the fish pond? We don't even, we don't even have it planned, we haven't been out for bids, and we haven't done it. If we wanna do it with money, we gotta agree here, should we go do this one, or shouldn't we do it? If not, get it off the list or develop a new one, or else ask the board for more money. But if it's on our list, and was there two years ago, don't you people think we should be going to this plan and look? We can add to it. It should be a living plan, but I think that's where we should start, instead of in 10 minutes, go around and see where we wanna spend money today, which is still necessary, because there's some action items. But do we want a pavilion at Veronica Valley? Who's working on it? I don't know, it might be sounding like I'm nagging, but these are in our plans, that was unpaid, there's a whole bunch of them in here. Minigated invasive species, we're doing it, we're working on it every year. We're getting goats and sprays and stuff. The educational signage, I think we spent money and got some signees, didn't we, John?
Signage, we have.
At various spots. Good, we can cross that out. Do we wanna add to it? What do you think about that, going through this and adding to it, or having the committees come back and say we did this?
I'm, I hear you. When we get to the item of discussing the new plan, the action items that were given to the committees at our last meeting on Monday.
The what?
With Monday, we had the meeting, the first meeting of the Parks and Rec 2025-29 Plan Committee meeting. And at that meeting, each park's committee was given a task to go through the existing plan, status the items in the plan, just like you were trying to do, and then we would get that as input to what we need to put into the plan for '25-29. So that would be any items that were done from here would be taken out. Any items which were not done and would not be done by the end of 2024, we would decide whether they should go forward into the new plan, and that would be essentially the process to get the new plan developed. And then, of course.
That's gonna take a couple of years.
I'm sorry?
That's gonna take a couple of years.
No, I think it's a matter of having a whole list of things from the five-year plan from before, which we've talked about, and then prioritizing them, then put them into the plan appropriately.
I think we're talking about what are we gonna do this year? Are we gonna build this pavilion at Veronica Valley or not? And if we're gonna do something for next year, Commissioner's gotta know here by July where to come up with his wish list. And to speak. I'm not gonna say anything anymore.
No, I mean, you're not wrong.
No, I'll, I got other.
We don't have the money to do everything.
There's some, and we should at least identify the list. I heard a few things here, but.
Well, I think everything that we mentioned for Miles Kimmerly is on this list, and we've been working really hard to read up it, so I feel pretty solid that we're following a process, but.
The paved loop trail has been on the list since 2017, long before I was even here.
Yeah, that'd be like building a new government center.
All right, so I would, are there any more discussion regarding the goals which were stated or elucidated by the various park committees, or for the goal for the overall commission? So at this time, I would entertain a motion if we would accept these as our 2024 goals, obviously subject to modification as the year goes on, as circumstances require.
Do we need a motion to go ahead with goals?
Well, I just want the motion that we would accept these as our commission's goals for 2024. Do I need a motion?
I don't think so.
Give by consensus. I don't hear a lot of objection.
All right, then I will ask that if we have a consensus that these would be our goals for 2024. Yes?
Yes.
With the clarification, again, I have to emphasize, I think we, as a committee, we all prioritize which is the most important one we do, which is number two, which is number three.
Yeah.
And if, like I say, Miles Kimmerly comes up, and nothing comes up as number one, two, or three, we have to wait our turn and wait till next year, whenever, to start something else, or vice versa, if everybody feels that this paved loop trail of Miles Kimmerly's been on the books for so long, we should put all our efforts into that and do that first, and nothing else. And not, not the Veronica Valley gazebo, which John is talking about.
I think he's right, though, because we're not gonna, again, our problem is action. We needed action, so how do we prioritize what we wanna do in 2024? It's not too early to start.
Then we should work as a group to do that, not individual parks, because individual parks, then you got three priorities that are at the top of the list, and then what are you gonna do? We don't have the money to do all three.
It's in a garage.
We have to work together as a group.
We gotta go hire a contractor.
I think this one, obviously, needs to be addressed soon.
Right, so I would ask that you include, when we get to your part.
Right.
A motion, if there's a motion required, to authorize the money to do this, and then we'll go forward at that point, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna shut up yet. We, we've got an important item at Veronica Valley that we gotta get done this year. The sign has been down for two years because we put that thing in. I'm talking to Scott, the posts aren't good, and I think it's an action item, call it a goal, but we're gonna have to get somebody to put, get that sign built and refurbished, and get it put up.
The big sign?
Yeah. And it's a matter of finding a contractor that wants to do the new post and drill it and put it in place and do it.
Do we know if it's more or less than $5,000?
Oh, yeah, it'll be a lot less than that.
Is it just replacing the post or the whole sign?
Is it an item, is it an item that I would classify as maintenance as opposed to capital?
It's still a goal, but we're gonna probably have to go out for bids, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Maybe not, but we gotta get it done, and it should be, it should be a goal this year.
Okay, essentially, I think, I think the rule is, if her money's less than $5,000, you make a motion to this committee to approve your expenditure of whatever that is.
I just wanna make sure it's there in case I'm not here anymore, in case John wins, if it's on there.
Would you like to make a motion today to give you the funding you need for the sign?
No, I just want it on the list.
So, so done?
All right. Moving on to the discussion and action items. The first item is the approval of the financials. You all received them, I think, or they're in the packet. I reviewed them for 2023. Obviously, we're significantly underspent, and the main item underspent is we didn't spend any capital money of the 55,000 that was available. So that's how we are significantly underspent there. I did look at the 2024 monies, and we have the outstanding item that the rollover of the capital money from 2023 into 2024 is not in the budgeted amounts as shown in the financials. So the status of that, I think, was it as, it is approved, because I talked to Michelle Crocker yesterday, just briefly for a moment, and she just said she knew that those needed to be amended, included, inserted into the budget. So unless I've misunderstood, I think that's the status of that. Yes.
Scott, can you remind me, why did we go over in membership dues? We just had $100, and then we spent 600. Is that going to be a?
SOS.
That was a miscount, misclassification of an expenditure.
It was due, not dues, but.
Okay.
It was really a contracted service or something.
All right. Okay, so that's not gonna be a recurrence this year? Because we don't have that much money in that line item, and I know we can pull it out of something else we didn't use, that's what they did last year, just with the, you know, to make it work. But I was just gonna say, if we go into, if we go into the budget this year, either raise that line item, or if it's, just so we don't look like we're out of whack.
It should go down to contractual services then, right, or no?
Yeah, I was.
Possibly.
So who's gonna initiate that conversation with?
Whoever does.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think we had that discussion with accounting. They know, they know the correct.
Well, it says, and fees.
The correct accounting. I don't know if they needed to do a transaction to move the money out of dues and put it.
Yeah, it was just, it was just pulling it out of one line item and paying it out of the others, what they did, so that the bottom line, you know, didn't go over. But it does say fees, so maybe that could be, if we have to pay that every year, then we should just raise that line item up for another year so that it looks proper. Because we'll do the same thing this year if, if it is a yearly thing. So just work with cap, Scott will talk with cap and see another.
And if there are some amendments that we should be having relate to 2023, but I don't know that there are.
I don't know what changed.
Yeah.
No, nothing will change.
At this point, I think the ship has sailed.
Yep.
So other than, other than the monies for capital expenditures in the '24 plan, that needs to be resolved. Do you have any other comments that anybody has about the financials that are before us?
We just need clarification then, that 55,000 has been carried over.
Fifty-eight, four, eighty-five. I'm all over. Everybody's counting.
If you'd like to get 55, but.
Do we need a motion to approve the financials?
You've got two separate, you've got two of them there, January 31st and December 31st. And I don't care, we can do them in one, but just so that we're clear, that we're approving both of them for.
For January, we're 473 of them.
Yeah, we haven't spent any money yet.
We think your reason for voting is $6.
So.
Valleys should've gone.
I guess I will make a motion to approve the 2023 year-end and the 2024 January financials as presented. I need a second.
Support.
Support from Kama? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have accepted financials. Okay, the next item on the discussion and action items is the Community Parks and Recreation Plan Update. Like I said, the committee did meet on Monday to begin the process. We reviewed a timeline, a draft timeline. We, we reviewed a timeline, a draft timeline, which has a drop dead date of the December Board of Commissioners meeting for them to receive and approve the new plan for 2025 and 2029. So we are working with a very compressed time schedule. Again, each one of the committees was asked to start a little reviewing the last plan to status the items that were, the action items that were in that plan, whether they're done, whether they're not, should not done and will not be done, or whether they're not done and they should move forward into the new plan. And then also to look at the general information which is presented for the park. Because there's, other than action items, there's also all that general verbiage and pictures and everything else. So that should be reviewed and updated if need be. And then there was a question about where the poor farm barn fell in, and the decision was that anything regarding the barn would be coordinated through the Miles Kimmerly Park Committee and would be part of their plan and their process. The last thing that came out of that at this point is we need a motion, we discussed the process and who would do it and the, and who the worker bees would be to actually do it. And we had clarification that planning does not have the available staff to do the plan, to do what's necessary to create the plan. We do know that Gosling Zubek is currently doing the exist, the new plan for Miles Kimmerly Park.
Conceptual plan, right?
Conceptual plan for Miles Kimmerly Park. They, Gosling Zubek also did the prior plan for 2024 and currently are the holder of the plan documents in a, and the county does not have an editable copy of the document that they created. So essentially, we, in order to make any changes to anything in the documents, we'd have to get them from them. So the motion that's going, that I will present is to request that the County Board of Commissioners authorize the Parks and Recreation Commission to seek a sole source proposal from Gosling Zubek to consult and prepare the 2025-2029 Parks and Recreation Plan. So that's my motion.
And there's also a, a thing on it that says it's gonna be editable.
Yes, the end, the end product would be, it has to be deliverable to us that is then an editable document that we can modify.
Okay. So you'll be at the, to ask, make that ask?
Well, there'll be a form for, to be going, to put the item into your agenda.
It is on our agenda.
Okay, so there's a form that I have to sign to get it on the agenda, I guess, which I will do at the end of this meeting. And if, if it's necessary that I be there, I will be there.
Hopeful will second it.
Hopeful seconds the motion. Discussion, Melinda.
A couple of things. Number one, we have our park plan that we pay for. So. Right. Planning says they can't, let, let's back up a little bit more. We have a park plan for one purpose, right? Short of going forward with what we mind to with parks. But it's so that we have the ability to go for grant dollars.
Right.
Correct, okay. So all we need is a park plan, so.
There are stipulations in the state documents about what is to be included in a park plan.
And all that is in our park plan.
It is in the current plan, yes.
So up to, so really, short of making some, I would say superficial changes to it and dates, that's really all we needed to do. My question would, to back up even further, buy an uneditable document. We own that document, but they're just saying they can't give it to us on some kind of software to move forward with. Or we cannot share it with another firm.
Correct, it's proprietary document that they own.
All right. We have budget rules, and I think Mr. Badun touched on these at your meeting. We do have budget rules to say that it has to go for bid. So if we take it to the full, this motion to the full Board of Commissioners, they would have to waive the bid policy. I would prefer that we just put this out for bid. Maybe Gosling Zubek is the right one, maybe Gory Fraser is the right one, maybe XYZ is the right one. But I would, I think we're going to need to put this out for bid so that we know we're getting the very best price possible for the plan.
Commander, I talked to Kevin Krogolecki today, and the plan from the 2024 that they did, and they did the work within house support, it came out to $10,700. They did that, and there was a little more work involved in that, and I didn't quite understand what he was talking, telling me over the phone about. But he said that to do it again, to follow up on this and update the plan, not including the, Miles Kimmerly paid $4,700 to do the conceptual plan. If, if the other parks do conceptual plans, that's money not included, you'll have to pay for that. But he said if those are out of the way, then the cost for the update is gonna be about $5,000, maybe plus or minus, probably plus a little more, maybe.
Because they'll be using that document and using it to perform. So it'll be easier for them. But then we would find that out in a bid. We'll know that when they bid, because they will have that, they would have that benefit of that information already.
But if we, if we put it out for bids and not go with just the one firm, the other firms are gonna have to just start from nothing.
Scratch.
And this other one, it's gonna be a lot less expensive, I believe.
They have, they could take our plan, we own the plan, I mean, they could take the plan and work from there as well.
Paper.
It's paper.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Don't they own the plan? I think they own it, the hardware and the software and all that, and they gave it to us. I'm not an authority on that, but I would think they have this on all their computer programs, and that should be able to be updated for a lot less than it was to go through.
Quite possibly, we'll be in the same boat again in five years.
Right.
I mean, and you're saying we're spending how much on Veronica Valley, we're doing individual park plans. We're spending a whole lot more than five for these plans.
To my knowledge, the only park that will require, is, is requiring a revised conceptual plan is Miles Kimmerly.
So you guys don't have to, so then we don't have to.
The conceptual is for old settlers, it is what it is, and it has been for years. You know, Keith's, you know, the Veronica Valley plan, I think, is acceptable as it is, so they won't have to redo that.
I just think we should look, I don't know, I'd like to talk to Trudy. I, I just think, and maybe Gail was here at the time, maybe she knows, but this just doesn't seem right, this doesn't sit right with me, it doesn't feel right. I, I don't know how we would have bought a plan we don't own.
I don't know, it's part of engineering and stuff.
I, I know, I know that, but it's never, we've always put these out for bid.
Well, you can, you can put it out for bids, uh, and, and see who wants to do it, and more than likely Gosling Zubek's gonna come in low, or you don't want to ask them for a quote of what it would take to update it, because now everybody knows what the quote's gonna be. I'd rather see this go to Gosling Zubek and, and go to the board and say, you know, we've looked this over and yada, yada, and, uh, I think it can be done a lot cheaper, and we'll single source it back to them. They know us, they know the sites, they know the parties, and they know everything. Then you'd have to have the board decide whether they want a single source. Now, someone can talk to Gosling Zubek and say, hey, what do you think? Oh, yeah, I can do this, la di da da.
That's sort of what Don did.
Yeah.
Yeah, they said.
But we shouldn't, we shouldn't announce it, but just say, hey, we talked to you, and hey, this thing can be done for a lot less than going out for bids.
He said the one done, the 20 to 24 one, the 10, 7, $10,700 was because they did, they did more than they would have to do this time. And I, I didn't follow that, I'd have to talk to him again, or somebody could. Why was it 10, 7, that? It's gonna be less than that to update it now. That's all I did, get out of the conversation.
So that would just basically be allowed to set their price, is the problem that I have. If you send it out for bid, they're gonna give us a good price, I mean, a fair price. So we're, but there, that's a firm that held us up last year, correct? They couldn't get the work done for what reason?
They're busy.
Gosling?
Yeah. So they never got the plan done last year, and we're gonna be asking them to do this plan, which is a bigger project?
They didn't get, what, Miles Kimmerly done last year?
I believe that's what held us up. Was it Miles Kimmerly? I want to say Veronica, but it was Miles Kimmerly.
He was away for a few weeks, whatever, you know, but.
I can't hear you, you're gonna have to talk.
It's almost, it's almost ready, conceptual plan for Miles Kimmerly.
Oh.
He's gonna get it out, it's, uh.
It's ready for public hearing.
Public hearing's not till April, because I'm, I'm not gonna be at the March meeting. So that's, I just delayed it, you guys can do it without me if you'd like, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
So if we want to get an RFP on this, we need to start now. So someone needs to get together with the planning commission, planning department and see if they're willing to write an RFP for us.
But part of Charlie's.
It's not my job.
Recommendation was that we would get an editable copy, right?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't find ourselves in this situation yet.
Be a problem next year, so. I really support the single source.
I do, too.
That's the way to go.
All right. Any further discussion, because we have a motion and a second for asking the Board of Commissioners to give us, authorize us to do a single source contract with Gosling Zubek. So at this point, I will call the motion, and I'll ask for a roll call on this one, I think.
I had, I, excuse me, I have a question, because I have a hard time following this. I appreciate what John brought up about the goals, which I feel that Veronica Valley should get together to say, okay, are these our goals? Can we define those? Do we need to change those goals and the objectives? Upon that time, a planner would develop a plan based on the goals. So I think the sequence here needs to be based on each group defining their goals, as John put up, and then have a planner do it. Part of that comes about because I used to do, and there was too much pie in the sky.
Well, John, they're developing this plan. Where they've got a committee for, and in that committee, they're gonna include these pages, 67 and 68 of the goals. Then this Joe Blow company is gonna put those in it. So if a guy has the award for this, one of his first things to do is to make sure we document all the goals, and we've got a committee working on all the goals, then that'll be put in here. It's not gonna come in front of us anymore. We'll have a representative on that committee, you follow me? So part of the thing is to develop these goals and action items.
Yeah.
That's part of his job.
It's sort of a true two-track thing. The first part is for each committee to essentially go over the old plan and status it.
Right.
Okay.
And then, you know, that develops your new goals, then what else, what else do we want to do that wasn't in the old plan? Is the last item we had.
And then that stuff gets put into this plan, whoever is a contractor.
Okay, as long as it's coming from us.
Yeah.
And then they're doing that.
Yes.
And not somebody that you always had one of these.
Right.
And depending on what your goals come out to be, you may decide that you want to do a conceptual plan update for Veronica Valley, let's say. And maybe you don't, and you could do it, like Kevin was even saying, you could do it before we do the five-year plan, or you could do it after the five-year plan's there and add an addendum to it. Your conceptual plan for Veronica Valley or Old Settlers does not have to be done before the five-year plan is done necessarily.
I can bring up a point, the other planning show.
John.
Oh, I'm sorry. Universal walkways. Your standard anti-gap driveway is six feet. Universal comes up with 10 feet. I'm opposed to 10 feet. 10 feet is just two feet shorter than a whole driveway. It's way out of scale for Veronica Valley. It's way out of scale for the number of anticipated barrier-free people. And so, um, just to throw, um, a barrier-free or universal code onto a plan, I think is incorrect, that there's ways of doing things. I just came back from Veronica Valley this afternoon and, and measured up the, um, the bridge and the open spaces between the bridge that we were called out for. And their five, open spaces are five and a half inches, you know, about greater than four, which is easily to maintain by putting something through halfway between five and a half inches to develop that, so. So I'm cautious, I'm just saying, well, this is universal requirements or something.
So what's your motion again?
The motion is that we are asking.
You gotta bring these things up to you, you gotta speak.
Yeah.
Bring that, bring that thing right up to you.
Let me, let me read, let me read the motion again.
I still can't hear you.
Let me, now can you hear me? Now can you hear me? Okay. The motion is, request the County Board of Commissioners to authorize the Parks and Recreation Commission to seek a sole source proposal from Gosling Zubek to consult slash prepare the 2025-2029 Parks and Rec Plan. That's the motion. And that was the one you seconded.
Yeah, but this is discussion now.
Right.
Should we add some stuff, like a small sentence that says, in that they did our last plan?
Then, then.
Just to sweeten the pot.
On the document I'm gonna sign a little bit later, those are justifications for the motion?
I don't know, sometimes it's good to put it, as a result of these people that did this last time, we recommend.
I mean, here's, here's what's stated on here as the justifications. Currently, Gosling Zubek is the only one who can edit or modify the current 2020-2024 Parks and Rec Plan documents. B, Gosling Zubek is currently preparing the update of the Miles Kimmerly Park conceptual design. The result of this project will be rolled into the 2025-2029 Park Plan. C, currently due to current staffing limitations, the 2025 through 2029 Park Plan cannot be done in-house.
Good.
Okay, so those are the justifications.
You answered my question. Now, you're gonna have to have a dollar figure to go up there.
There is.
Okay, you got that all done.
Which is, I think now more than necessary, based on Don's conversation.
Okay.
I'll try to find.
Without specifying what that dollar is.
Dollar, you're not mentioning, you're going with the dollar mention, figure that was mentioned?
I kind of had a lesson learned from a previous meeting that because these meetings are recorded, don't mention the dollar amount.
Thank you. So, all right, all right.
It's on the form, and that's public, that'll be a public document.
So Melinda, can you submit something to the agenda and the, you know, and on the EDS, you don't have to put a dollar amount on there?
No.
Okay, so now I'll ask for a roll call vote on this motion.
Okay, Mr. Godba.
Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Ferret.
Yes.
Ms. Lautner?
No.
Mr. Popa?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And Mr. Badun?
No.
Motion carries? Moving on. Yes, Scott?
Your timeline?
Yes.
From the last two that I've been on, this is not gonna work.
Okay.
We need to move that up at least three months, the end of final in December.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen that time.
Would you send?
We'll move that up three months.
Would you send me for the committee what your concerns are? Well, no, I mean, tell me what date you would use instead of what I've got there?
I just bump it up at least three months.
Everything from the public hearing?
Why is that, Scott?
Because you've got one month in the public hearing to the.
Right, to the, to the, to the approval.
Gosling Zubek, you know, whoever does that, won't be able to do it. By bumping up, you mean into the next? By bumping up, you mean into the next year or bring it forward?
You mean to make the corrections?
You really need to be started, you know, your draft and your park plans that should be done yesterday.
And we don't, we don't, we don't meet in July, right? Correct? So, I mean, obviously the Park and Plan Committee could meet in July if we have to. So that one, you could move it up there. I mean, right now that would be, what that would do is compress the time for each of the park committees to do their thing. But right now I gave them until like August to finish to get that done.
Let's move it up.
Well, we'll try.
If you look at the big picture, you don't have to change a lot of that.
Okay.
Well, this is...
You know, it's gotta get moving and all going because to start, you know, revision until September, that's not...
Well, you've got, yeah, it's... You've got some other dates. Yeah, you're absolutely right. And you've also got to work with companies that get the bid, so they're going to tell you. Yeah, you've got, notices have to go in the enterprise by a certain time. Um, you know, you've got your dates that would have to be on, put on County Board Commissioners' agendas. Um, and you're really pushing it to, yeah, if there's questions at all, in December, we're right at the, we're buttoning up against the end of the year.
We'll try.
So those dates are quite similar to what was done between '20 and '24 for that report.
Well, that was a brand-new plan. This one, if we're lucky, and that's why we're, it's got a lot of this, you can use the same pictures and everything.
All right, we'll take that under consideration and adjust the timeline as, as necessary. All right, can we move on to the updates of the risk assessment report for items for each park, if you're prepared? I, I mean, I have the ones for Old Settlers. Um, and actually I have a couple of motions. One discussion item, the Old Settlers Park Committee is going to request guidance from corporate legal regarding the MMRMA assessment item related to, um, people using the chapel and whether there should be a lease agreement requiring insurance policies and all that stuff. Right now it's, that is essentially handled by the Glen Lake Women's Group. Um, and they only accept some monies as a donation to their group to essentially cover the cost of the cleaning and whatnot that they do for the chapel. And there's really no cost to the user or the person who's using the chapel. And I don't know that we want to get into having the people who want to use the chapel have to pay anything to use the chapel. But, so that, that's all discussion for legal to have, give us guidance as to how we handle this. But the risk assessment people said we should have an agreement between the county and the user, not just this women's group and whoever the user is.
Were they under the assumption it was being rented to them?
Well, they knew that there was monies going between the user and the, and the women's group. Now, whether they were considering that rent, I don't know.
No, they did not. They considered the clean.
It's a, a donation for cleaning.
Right.
Right.
And rent is also used in the soccer field, baseball fields, which we want.
So anyway, that's, that's just a discussion or notification that we're gonna undertake a discussion with legal about that. The other item is pertaining to the playground surface material. Did some research about what the best or the lowest cost or, actually the most expensive one was, which really came in with a number that I was astounded by. But anyway, so I'm having a motion to approve, approve, asking approval, approval from this group to proceed with the project to augment the engineered wood material fiber playground surface material that's under the existing playground equipment and then add the recommended required engineered wood fiber surface material under the swing set area where there currently is no wood fiber or any playground surface material. So that is my motion for this committee's approval.
To go out for a bid, then.
Melinda?
Um, this is a maintenance item. And what was the price it came in at?
Um, well, we said, we said not to exceed $4,500.
Yeah, we may not need a motion to, to do that if it's maintenance. This is something, as we talked about, we're gonna have to do it at least every year, at least fluff it and add some, so we've got the required number. I just, I mean, perhaps a motion. I have no problem with the motion. I have no problem supporting it. I just wondered if we can just, if we have to keep having a motion to do it or maintenance can just...
We're not making a motion to take it to the board. We're just making a motion here to, to get going.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll support your motion.
Okay, Cam supports.
Further discussion? Yeah, this is where I come back to where we have to prioritize things. Each park has playground equipment. Each park has the, the need for this substance to be put down. And I think that we should do it as a group and that should be maybe one of the first things we do for the safety issue is to put that down at all three parks and get a price for, in all three parks, we'll get a lower price and if we do it individually, I believe.
I believe each of the three parks and their playground areas has different surface materials currently?
It might be a little different, but the end result is we want the engineered wood out of all of them probably because they have...
Any engineered wood fiber in the other two parks?
Veronica and Old Settlers.
Have the wood. And Myles Kimmerly has sand, I think.
Sand and rocks.
We have some paint boulders.
That does not sound good. I just jumped to the head of the line here.
Don, Don's right. I mean, they're, it's listed under our, you know...
Actually, you know, and that item was listed under all three parks.
Totally, yeah, so...
I mean, we should do it as, as a group.
I think if we, if we go for all three parks as one combined thing, we would exceed the limits on how much we can authorize to spend and therefore would have to probably go through the whole bid process where if you did each park individually, you might not have to.
I don't want to circumvent the process. I don't want to circumvent the process, but I think you're correct. And because we do them this way, we do, we've been taking, maintaining them as individual parks. I wouldn't do them all in one bid.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to have, to authorize us to go ahead and augment the material and add the material as necessary under the swings.
At Old Settlers.
I'm sorry?
At Old Settlers.
At Old Settlers. Yes. So I will call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that is my last item under updates of risk assessments.
Oh, we didn't talk about Myles Kimmerly.
No, I'm, I said, that's my last one. Moving on to the other parks. Anything from Myles Kimmerly?
I can go next or last?
You can go next.
Okay, I'll go next. Well, first thing I have on the list of things that the MMRMA recommended was winter risks. And we have no snow, so the sledding, the ice rink and the cross-country skiing at Myles Kimmerly doesn't count.
So we'll defer that to next winter?
That might be. Uh, the next item is about grants for the, they have these RAP. I forgot what the RAP stands for, their grants. We were gonna, in the previous minutes, they talked about what are the timelines for getting the, uh, for the, getting the RAP grants in. You just go to the website and it's right there. And it's, uh, it's, uh, January, which is past, but then it's in April 10th and July 10th and October 10th. So there's opportunities to put grants in for any of these projects and this might be one of them we can do that for.
Okay.
And that would be a good one. So look at the website and look at that and it's available.
Now, I'm sorry, your, your committee would prepare the documents to put in the grant?
Well, no, we would, but I, what I tried to get it online, the document online, but I, I don't have a government email address, so they won't let me in. So somebody that has a government...
I can look at it for...
You'll have to do it, yeah.
Yep.
And then you print out the grant.
Yeah.
The rap grant.
The grant application and that sort of thing. So that's where we look for that.
And we're thinking the, the chips and some of this stuff might fall under anything?
Yeah, I couldn't get into their website at all. They wouldn't let me in.
So we missed January, but we can do it.
We can do it for April even.
RAP.
Well, April's a little late. Well, we could do it for April.
Risk assess, what was it?
Risk assess. Program?
Program?
Oh.
Something like that, you know, yeah, for sure.
Then the other thing, each park, I'm sure Veronica Valley has just as many, but Myles Kimmerly had a lot of things.
Yeah, all that.
Myles Kimmerly had a lot of things that were recommended that we haven't done, that were recommended back in 17 when they had this report. Now they're recommending again. Hot coal containers, splintered wooden on the tables, liability release issues, which was mentioned at the other park for the soccer field, the baseball field. We haven't done that. Uh, the playground equipment, we mentioned, uh, no, 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 we mentioned the surface area of the playground. We didn't mention the playground equipment itself needs replant and replacement. There's lots of things that are, that are previous risk factors. So those were, and every park has these. And I, I urge again that this committee works as a group together and says, which is the most important ones for the whole group and not just individual parks, so we get that done. And one of them is the playground surface area, which I, I support, whether we do it as one or three or whatever, how we ever put the RAP, IP, grant money, and doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm done. Anything from Veronica Valley?
Yes, sir. Um, the savin weed control invasive species. Um, I do have their, their bill and this amount right here does include the down payment, um, $2,425. Um, I know it's early, but who knows the, this May might be the new June. I don't know the way weather's going. But I would like to submit this and make a motion to have the funds allocated to pay this so that this is ready to go when the time comes.
Where was savin charged in the past? Is that a consulting service or?
Tractile.
Or, or maintenance?
Huh?
So it's under a maintenance item. So I'm going, I guess I'll go back to Melinda's comments. Do we need to authorize funds for spending for maintenance items?
What is your amount?
Thirty-seven twenty-five?
No, $2,425. That's the standard where they come out and they assess.
So we're not going with the premium program?
No.
Okay.
We've always went with, apparently we've always went with the standard.
Pond maintenance.
They come out and they, they look at what areas need to be treated so they don't over-treat and kill off more than what they need to. Then I guess we have the, the goats will come out and...
Eat up invasives?
That's true.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um, I guess I'm asking for guidance. Do we need a motion to authorize? Well, we, we took one for, we, we took one for Old Settlers, so let's go ahead and make one for this, to make a motion to authorize Veronica Valley to expend not more than $2,525 for the pond maintenance program, weed eradication projects?
Correct.
That's my motion.
I support it. Yeah, technically it is.
I support it.
Any more further discussion? John Popa?
You said pond. This is for fields too, isn't it?
Well, the areas.
It shouldn't say Veronica Maintenance Pond. It should say Veronica Maintenance Park.
What's the description? Pond Maintenance Program.
That's what I got from...
You do, but he, he stated a different motion. I think she should read us the motion.
Good luck with that.
I'm gonna rely on the record. It's Scott, uh, motion by Badum.
Motion by Godbo.
Yeah.
Okay, it'll be Keith's motion.
To authorize Veronica Valley to expend not more than 24, $2,425 for pond maintenance and eradication.
For what?
Invasive weeds.
Is invasive weed eradication?
Just for the pond, he's saying.
Well, this is, I think, just for the ponds.
That's what the... Well, you mentioned goats. How are they gonna get in a pond?
That's a, that's two different things.
Yeah, it's two different, that's a whole different...
So we're only, this motion doesn't involve...
Yeah, nothing, nothing about goats, this motion.
All right.
The swimming goat, John.
All right.
They like...
All right. So I guess we'll make Keith, this is Keith's motion and I'll second the motion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, authorized to spend the money.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't bring the full grocery list here, but another thing we talked about was the posts for the Veronica Valley sign. Um, I don't know what...
I'll look into that and come back.
Okay.
I'll look into somebody that can possibly do that.
Okay, so we probably should just wait then until we get a, a dollar amount and then we'll go from there. Same thing with the posts for the fences that are out there. Once we get a, a dollar amount, then we'll go from there. I think that's it for my list.
Okay.
But the chair was asking us to review this risk assessment thing of where we're standing. And you were getting into some maintenance items, so we gotta go back, we gotta go back to the subject, the risk assessment. What did we take care of at Veronica Valley and what's outstanding? Wasn't that your...
That was, that was the...
That was the item of the subject, right? Okay. So one thing we took care of, and Scott, did you order our ladder? No, but I looked him up. We have a ladder that we need to put in so people can climb out when they fall in. And we have a little issue yet with the spacing of the boards. And I think those were, but we don't have to resolve that today, but I don't think we have anything to report on that unless John does. We haven't really had a committee meeting to see whether it's even necessary or not.
Okay.
Was that the only two things on there, Scott, on that risk assessment that affected Veronica?
Trail system, trimming back.
Playground surface, the walking trail needs to be trimmed.
Cover bridge.
The rails. I think that was it. So that's, that resolves now all of park's risk assessment discussion.
And, and this item is going to continue to appear on the monthly meetings?
Good.
Okay, to get a status on where we are on these things until we've essentially wiped out any of the outstanding issues related to this risk assessment.
So now we're on our next agenda item.
Well, let me just, I just got on to request login access and I'm not sure who would have, have you had access to this MMRAP rap grants? Okay, so once I have access to it, I would recommend that maybe one member from each of the parks meet and we look over this to submit a grant. And as Don said, the next is April 10th, four times a year, April, January, April, about two other dates.
January 10th, Aprils, July and October.
A grant in to cover some of these things.
Well, you have to get approval to, to, for the grants though.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So it's probably, maybe it has to go through Jill.
Jill.
Laurel. And Mike.
The, the planning department or?
No, um, Board of Commissioners. So I think to apply for a grant, we have to have permission to apply for the grant.
Sure. I'm just talking about, let's look at if, if we would qualify and what...
Okay, I thought you were saying that then to go on there and apply for grants.
No.
Okay.
Just want to get the information and...
Yeah, getting the information is no problem.
Yeah, of course.
If, if there is an online application, we wouldn't trigger that until after we got the board's approval to go ahead with the grant.
Right, right.
Even if it is online. Okay.
Right.
All right. Uh, moving on.
No, you still...
The next item I have was the added item I put on the agenda for the, um, actually, John, why don't you go to the summer help? Why don't you go to that item?
I think we have a concern of obtaining enough help this summer to maintain our parks. And I'm looking at the two commissioners here. I don't know where you are on approving personnel. And we know that we've got a human resource department that isn't quite developed yet. But I think we're, we're not gonna have any summer help this summer. Uh, we've had people help mow the lawns, but that's about all they can do. Who, where's the monkey now to hire summer help? Do we need some more permanent people? Uh, who's in charge of getting the applications out for? Our, our facilities manager is coming and going. He's on vacation. I don't know who it is, but I don't think we're gonna have enough summer help to even mow lawns. Scott's concerned about it too. Uh, Scott's had discussions. Uh, I saw Deb in a hall or something the other day and said, where is it at? And he said he's waiting for Jerry to do something. I don't know what that means. I'm thinking, is it, is it on the county commissioner's plate? Are they saying, okay, uh, we need to send out applications? Have they even been sent out? I don't know the process. But, uh, Scott's a little bit upset. We've had some people before here temporarily, but... We've had some people before here temporarily, but I'm not sure some of them can do anything but ride a lawnmower, and then they got a bad back. But I think we should advertise, and we should be advertising soon, because I don't think we're going to even have anybody to mow grass this summer. That's my speech.
I'd like to know where we are.
We had help for 20 hours a week in previous years. Last summer was kind of a fluke, the guy got hurt on his own.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Wasn't able to help. He was coming and going. But anyway, the 20-hour weeks really just not enough. And this person was just only able to mow, which wasn't help with anything else.
Where is that in your budget?
It's budgeted for 20 hours.
And which salaries?
Which line item, though?
It was been approved not four years, five years.
This doesn't look like there's enough, because we've only got 39 in there. Isn't that you for six months?
Thirty-nine thousand.
That's you at...
So, where's the 20 hours, the summer help?
I don't know that it's in here.
And I guess that's why I'm bringing it up, Melissa. I think this committee, Parks and Rec Committee, should be on the county commissioner's agenda to get some summer help and get in a motion to do it, whether we get a new personnel person to do it, or we do it, or whatever, but something's got to get called to the attention so that you guys got something to look at for the budget.
Yeah, yeah, we just need numbers and...
Scott ain't going to be able to do it.
To be honest, if it's not on fire, it's not getting done.
Right. Yeah, you've got a deferred maintenance list, not just for the parks, but for other facilities.
I'm embarrassed by the way the parks are. Stuff's falling down, it's rotting out, and I don't have the time or the resources to fix it.
But, I mean...
Beyond frustrated, and I've talked with a few of you.
Well, I looked at the documents that Casey submitted for the budget, and there's really no personnel information in that.
No.
I've tried to act as a department head, and not even got enough. So much is thank you, and I see other people getting snipens for a few little things that they do. And, you know, it's really frustrating.
I mean, one of my...
We need help, is why.
So, what is the process? Should it come through Jerry or who?
Who asks for more people?
I have no idea what the process is on anything anymore, because it's all changed, so I don't even...
Let's find out.
Need to do an EDS.
I guess I'm looking at two commissioners. What should we do?
We need an EDS to ask for some summer help and do it as soon as possible, so we can advertise and get somebody lined up that, and we're going to have to name a number, you know, 21, 36, what are you looking for? Because you go over 21, it's a full-time. Over 20s, partial...
Are you talking hours, 20 hours, 20 minutes?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, over 20 is going to be a partial Benny package. Anything more than that's going to probably be a full one. But, yeah, do an EDS and ask for the summer help, but I hope they don't say, well, we're just, we're going to give you 55,000, take it out of that.
Well, I mean, the question when we come to the budget time is, if the maintenance, if the maintenance department has X number of people, and they have a maintenance backlog of two years' worth of maintenance items, that tells me you need to add another person full-time.
This is frustrating, though, because we had this fight, what, four years ago, getting a second person for parks, and we finally won that battle and got some help for parks.
Only six months.
But why it's not in the budget, I don't know. Well, yeah, even that's what Scott, Scott, it's six months.
I mean, as far as...
And I don't care if you get somebody for three months to do the heavy pole.
I mean, as far as this information, Scott, not Scott, that Casey submitted, he doesn't talk, he's not asked to talk about people and people needs. So, somewhere in the budgeting process, someone with, has got a crystal ball that's saying, oh, we need to add one more person to the maintenance department? Or is that Jerry asking for one more person in the maintenance department? Or where does that start?
An EDS.
Well, we should be talking to Gail Meyer, shouldn't we, about...
Executive Document Summary is what she's saying here.
I can give a short answer to that. This county needs a facilities manager. You need a facilities manager that someone can go to and say, here's what we need, assess our stuff. We've got millions of dollars of buildings, millions of dollars of parks, and it's not managed. One guy's on vacation, this guy quit, the other one got a sore back, and no one's on first. But that's not going to happen until the board looks at this. But, let's get back to my question.
Do you have a discussion with Kathy that has to take place?
I think we should start with the planning department. That's where it needs to start. I don't think we should go to finance.
Nope.
I didn't hear that.
I think you should start with Gail Meyer. She is, she has advisory or administrative responsibility for this commission.
So, go to Gail to request people?
To ask her what we need to do to get this rolling. Yeah, I would say that would be the way to go.
Okay.
Don't you think, or?
I don't know that Gail's the person that's...
I don't either.
...that's the process.
She's not going to know anything.
Why not? That's her job.
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, we need to find out then.
I mean, someone's got a list of the departments and how many people in each department.
Yeah, well, we can figure, we can figure this out. I'll be happy to make some...
Yeah, perhaps work with maybe HR, maybe collectively Gail and HR can begin to put together EDS, and we can bring it, we can carry the water once it's put on the agenda.
Is that how to bring it in front of the board? Get two EDSs or one, or what? What does an EDS stand for, Melinda?
The Executive Document Summary. And that's what our agenda will be made up for when it goes through executive session.
Each person that has an item on the agenda...
I guess I know what it is. I've done 20 or 30 or 40 of them.
That's a great idea, though, to get Gail and the HR person together. At least somebody probably could give them, you know, your first start.
So, who's going to draft this up? The chair?
I think we need Scott's input on what he needs and what he thinks is doable, right? Spell out.
I'll take it.
Honestly, I would do it, I would perhaps do it in bites. Okay, we can try to help you out, Scott. We're going to try to get you some help. So, I would do it in bites, like ideally six months, ideally, if it's ideally six months, minimum three, if we give you three and a continuation.
Full-time.
Okay.
Good.
And if they're full-time temp, we may be able to get away from that package.
I didn't hear that about full-time and part-time.
Well, I think if it's, if there's some breakdown, where if it's sick, there, you can be temporary full-time.
Right, that's what we have at the road commission.
Yeah, 35 hours, but they won't be technically a full-time person. So, in other words, they won't, they won't get the whole benefit package, which is another 50% of whatever we're paying them, which is probably going to be a minimum of $25 an hour, because that's our minimum person.
Are we just looking for one or two? Scott needs two.
I will be one. Well, there you go. Do we ask for three and hope we can give you one, right? No, I would ask for one. Full-time temp for three to six months. And start there.
Should you and I sit and write one of these up?
I would have Gail and HR write it.
There is no HR.
We have HR. Yeah, we have Heather. We have a new HR person.
She's been on for two weeks. Why don't you know this? She's really good, though. Yeah.
That's right, she came from Grand Travis County. Is she back there?
Yeah, I don't know right now, but, yeah.
Right.
Let me just, excuse me. I'm going to try to set up a meeting with Gail when she's back from Vegas, and Heather, and discuss the topic of how we make this happen.
And include Jen Zawiki.
Who?
Include Jen Zawiki.
Include Jen.
Because Kathy's, or Kathy, Kathy might be back too. I don't know when Gail's going back. Kathy, start with Kathy, not Jen. Start with Kathy, because it's a number thing. Somebody's going to have to put these numbers together to present to us, and that's going to be Kathy.
Okay. Now, how you go about doing it, but I still think we should agree in a motion to ask for a full-time, or what was the word?
Temporary full-time?
A temporary full-time employee for Parks and Recreation.
For the summer months.
Summer months.
For this year.
For 2024.
Yep.
Is that your motion?
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the way to word it, Melissa?
Yeah, absolutely, because before it comes to executive, it will be cleaned up if it needs to be.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Now, how you go about getting there, you can work that out.
Start that process.
And I will heartily support that motion, because I've thought of you being under staff for a couple of years now.
Would it help if this was put on the agenda for the next commissioners' meeting?
Well, you got, the executive meets next week.
On the agenda and say this is a need, or they could act on it immediately?
Yeah.
Scott reports to Jerry. Jerry?
We just missed the deadline, but this is February, so if we can get it approved in March and find, put it up or hire and find somebody in April or May, we'll be okay. Hopefully, April, so if Scott can get him to work in May.
It doesn't hurt to leak it out ahead of time.
Well, we can, we can certainly, yeah, under commissioner comments, let them know this is coming for the next one.
Commissioners can make comments, say, hey, smoke's coming down the road or something.
Yep.
Can I take your action here, your item?
Well, it did, but we didn't vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me call the motion. We have a motion in a second. I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a motion.
Got that taken.
We accept it.
You are welcome.
All right. The last item on the thing is the Old Settlers Addition Action Items. I have two motions to make. Again, these are to go, essentially get permission to go forward with a couple of projects. The first is Parks and Recreation Commission to approve proceeding with the installation of a portable toilet pad on the northeast side of the park to accommodate one standard and one universal access portable toilet. From discussions with Scott, this would be done in-house, essentially, I believe. And the cost would probably not exceed $3,000 to do it. So, that is my motion.
You had two motions there.
Well, I have a second item. I'll go to move that with the next one.
I'll support.
Okay. Camus supports that motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Discussion.
No, I'm sorry, discussion?
No, thank you. Does it, you get the pad, and you're going to have a portable UA and a portable toilet? Any fencing around it?
I don't know what the requirements are for fencing.
Or...
Huh? There isn't any. I mean, currently, we take two porta potties when the picnic occurs, and we just set them on the ground.
No, I understand. I just wonder if you want to do one.
This is just to allow us to have porta potties year, the whole summer and fall season on the southeast, on the northeast side of the park.
Reason I'd ask, Scott, Scott had given us some pictures of the one out at Palmer Woods, was it? Yeah, which was very nice.
Way more than we need.
More than we need. Was that bigger?
And the one you guys are putting in at Veronica Valley is way more than we need.
I'm not putting anything in there.
Or maybe it was mine. No, it was Veronica, I think. It was just a lot bigger because you were putting garbage cans next to it.
Throw that out.
Dear Brian.
I think aesthetically, it's nice to see, you know, if you see a porta john outstanding in the field, not enclosed by bushes or plants or something.
Well, I know numerous women who are actually concerned when the porta potty has too much visual stuff in front of it.
Well, you'd make a subtle...
Madison.
There's a fence, it's a solid fence, and there's a fence that's opened up, and, you know.
It's a porta john, just...
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, the second motion I have is for Parks and Rec Commission to request of the county Board of Commissioners authorization to bypass the formal bidding process and to approach local contractors in the area who are believed qualified and capable of accomplishing the project scope of the gazebo refurbishment project as defined in the bid package. We went out for bids, we got no bids. So, that process didn't work for us, so we need to essentially identify local contractors who are capable of doing the work, and then go out to a list of contractors and submit bids, and ask them to submit bids, because the process didn't work for us, for this project.
And how much was that approximately, did you have?
I have no dollar amount for this at the moment. I know, I know how much we put in the budget for all the gazebo work, but this is essentially, we tried to get the bids, and we didn't get any submitted.
So, you just want to, our approval to go ahead and try to...
Well, I need, we actually, I think, need the county Board of Commissioners authorization to do this, instead of rebidding the whole thing again.
Is there a second for that, so we can get into discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay, now discussion?
Okay. We can't go to the commissioners and ask them to approve something that we don't have any bid whatsoever. You can still go out, and we discussed it here, that we tried for this, and that didn't work and whatever. Let's go out and just find a contractor. When you find a contractor, he comes back and says, yeah, I'll do it for two grand. Then you go to the commissioners and say, hey, we searched all over, we did an RFP and it didn't work. I found a guy that'll do it for two grand, and we're authorized to spend that. But, you can't go to them now and ask to spend something you don't know what it is.
Well, I guess the thing I'm asking for, do I need permission to essentially bypass the RFP procedure?
No, you don't need permission. You can go out and get quotes on anything you want.